Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Present.
Alderman Spaghettius.
Present.
Alderman Talonair.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Ship.
Here.
Alderman Geenan.
Here.
Mayor Tomes.
Here.
You have the call.
Thank you. Could do a pledge allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So we have item number five.
Minutes of the January 8th, 2018 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as printed.
Second. Move to second, in discussion. Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Update. Well, we got the community conversation on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018. The downtown Rock Island Public Library wants to better understand your aspirations for your community and neighborhoods. The concerns you have and what you believe might make a difference in strengthening the community. We'll take what we learn and use it to help make our work in the community more effective. These small groups, kitchen table type discussions are not about the library, about you and the community. Conversations will start at 6:00 PM and go till 7:30 at the main library at 401 19th Street. For more information, please call 309-732-7303. Builders and remodelers home show, Quad City Builders and Remodelers Association Annual Home Show is February 2nd, 3rd, and 4th at the QCCA Expo Center. Friday hours are noon to 8:00 PM, Saturday 10:00 to 8:00 PM, and Sunday 10:00 to 4:00 PM. Ticket prices are $8, or you can pick your tickets up at Hy-Vee and get a dollar off. Youth 16 and younger get in free. On Friday, seniors 60 and over get in for only $5. Visit www.qcbr.org for more information. Dad and daughter date night. Dads and daughters, get dressed up, come have a fun night out together. Dance to music from Live DJ, have photos taken in the photo booth, enjoy snacks, and do a craft together. Join the fun on Saturday, February 10th, 2018, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Rock Island Fitness and Activity Center, located at 4303 24th Street. The cost is $30 for dad and daughter pair, and another $10 for an additional daughter. For more information or to register, please call 309-732-7275. Thank you for that information. And then we have a presentation.
Presentation of the 2017 Holiday Lighting Awards.
So we have some people in the audience here. This was the, excuse me, but let you know, the 32nd year that the Beautification Commission has held its annual holiday lighting contest. The contest is intended to recognize Rock Island residents and businesses who craft seasonal displays that are enjoyed by many throughout the holidays. This year, over 21 lighting displays were nominated. Displays were viewed by the commission during a bus tour the evening of December 11th. Winners were selected in both residential and commercial categories. Each display was truly outstanding, and the commission would like to thank everyone who participated in this year's contest. I will begin by reading some of the names of nominees who have already received their honorable mentions. So I don't know if you want to say anything further, but you ready to pass these out?
Ready.
All right. Well, we have honorable mention, and I can rattle off some addresses, they are up here, but we have one at 1540 25th Street, 2230th Street, 3501 30th Street, 24 Woodley Drive, 11 Chippionic Trail, 16 Chippionic Trail, competition there in the neighborhood, 2116 24th Street, 3904 7th Avenue, 2337 24th and a half Street, and 2432 47th Street, and 4026 25th Avenue. So, in the commercial category, we have an honorable mention, the commercial category at 3914th Avenue, Lambs Florist. Is anybody here with Lambs? Nobody here, okay, that's fine. So without further ado, I would like to now read the names of this year's residential and commercial winners. When your name is called, please come up and receive your certificate from Mr. Toller. Please stand up front until we have all the winners up front, and we'll do a group photo. We will have a video clip of the winning light displays, which will be shown as the winner comes up forward. So we have the residential. Third place, Mike and Sally Colbert of 4027 25th. Then come up, appreciate it. And, oh, there's a pic, there's a video. And then, second place, we have Derwin and Deborah Elliott. Are they here?
Not me, buddy. It's beautiful.
And first place, Thomas and Julie Ingalls at 1911 24th Street.
The video's not too good.
So then we have the commercial. Third place, Annette Hootum. Owner of Cool Bean. Second place, Pat Schaus. VP of Patient and Community Act Advocacy, Unit 11. I always want to say Trinity. Trinity. Page out of the hospital. First place, Amy Jenkins. Executive Director of Quad City 47. What was the point of this play, too? The first year out.
Yeah, he might have. Yeah. All right. Very nice. That'd be a two-story on 1911. Yeah, it's gotta be a big two-story. It's just beautiful. Tall terrace. But I've never seen him penetrate the neighborhood grade. I checked. Speaking of, I don't look like you. Oh, they have a huge tree. Turned into Wendy and Colton.
All right.
Item number eight. Presentation of the 2017 Commercial Beautification Awards.
All right, right in here. This program was created to honor business owners for their efforts in improving the facades and landscaping of their properties. This year, the Beautification Commission will honor four businesses with a traveling plaque or trophy. There was 14 nominees, and a quantity, excuse me, and a quality of each project made this selection process difficult. Each of this year's projects has helped beautify the business surrounding neighbors and the city of Rock Island at large. The Beautification Committee commends your efforts. We can read the nominees who have already received their honorable mention certificates. We had ByState Masonry, Farmhouse Properties, Igor's Brewstrow, Labor Space Mississippi Truck and Trailer Repair, Radical Effects Brew, St. Pious Church, Tim's Corner Tap, Wake Brewing, well, there's a few beer places here. Somebody's spending some time having a drink while they're traveling around. Excel Consultants. Now the name of this year's winners. As your names called, please come up and accept your award. We'll stay up front for some pictures also. Beautification Commission Award, The Loft Group for 1715 2nd Avenue, accepting the owner, Jeff Dizmer. Thank you very much, Jeff. City Council Award. Athletico Physical Therapy, 2825 18th Avenue. Accepting the award is manager Casey Krieger. Yep, there you go. Mayor's Church Award, St. James Lutheran Church for 3145 31st Avenue. Accepting the award is Pastor Don Knowles and David and Donna Renneke. And the overall winner, the Rotary Trophy Award, Quad City Coffee and Pancake House for 1831 3rd Avenue. Accepting the award are Jose and Sarah. I don't know if I saw, oh, there they are.
Yeah.
Here, here, come on up.
Where's my Sammy Bale?
Awesome. Great. They deserve it, good for them.
Some bagel. Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
All right. Onto some, I'll say boring business compared to that, that was great stuff. Item number nine.
Claims A through E. A, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $12,595.04 to David Morrison of Rock Island, Illinois, for legal services rendered for the period of November 16th, 2017 through December 29th, 2017. B, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $21,278.07 to Blaze Restoration Incorporated of Moline, Illinois for general liability claim. C, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number two in the amount of $48,279 to Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois for the 2017 Catch Basin and Manhole Program for services provided from September 21st, 2017 through December 21st, 2017. D, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number five in the amount of $1,511,990.09 to General Constructors Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa, for the Outfall 7 Relocation Project for services provided from December 1, 2017 through December 31st, 2017. And E, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one and final in the amount of $314,816.21 to Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois for the Downtown Stormwater Repair 17th Street, 4th to 5th Avenues and 4th Avenue, 18th to 19th Streets Project for services provided from November 2, 2017 through December 20, 2017.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payments for claims items A through E as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, is there any discussion?
Like to. Apologies, I forgot to email Judith. Can we break these out? Vote on just A and B, and then C through E? Want to take your motion back? I'm recusing from some of the votes, yeah.
I take my motion back.
Okay, so we need a motion with just the...
Move to accept the reports and authorize payments for claims A through B as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion on those? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Need a motion on the remaining.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payments for claim items, sorry, C through E.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion on those?
I will be recusing myself from this vote due to my employment.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Ship.
Yes.
Geenan.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 10.
Claims for the weeks of January 5th to January 11th in the amount of $2,148,830.06 and January 12th through January 18th in the amount of $623,164.08. And payroll for the weeks of January 1st through January 14th in the amount of $1,489,514.03.
Move to allow the claims and the payroll.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan. Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 11.
ACH payments for the month of December 2017 in the amount of $6,407,785.04.
Move to approve the ACH payments.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 12.
Purchase card claims for the period from November 27th, 2017 through December 26th, 2017 in the amount of $76,159.04.
Move to approve the purchase card claims.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 13.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the purchase of four 58,000 GVW tandem axle cab and chassis vehicles and outfitting them with dump bodies, front end snow plows, mid-mount wing plows, and tailgate spreaders. Recommending the bids be awarded to Truck Country Quad Cities of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $394,678 for the vehicles, and to Benell Industries Incorporated of Dixon, Illinois in the amount of $286,296 for the outfitting.
Move to award the bids as recommended and authorized purchases.
Second.
Move to second, is there any discussion?
I guess the only thing that I would say is that all four of the bids that I see here come from truck dealerships across the river, and I know of at least one particular dealership here in Rock Island. Did they not bid, were they not given the, you know, I guess, we have a few dealerships here in Rock Island, or on the Illinois side. Did they just not respond to the RFP?
Did not respond at all? What you see on that list is everybody that did respond to the RFP?
I'm gonna have to call the sales manager of QC Kenworth.
Sure. Roll call, please.
And just real quick, Mayor, I'm sorry. The point I wanted to make with this, this is obviously a slightly larger purchase than normally appears for equipment or vehicles, you know, this is the cost of us maintaining the status of having great snow removal service. And when it falls, we need it off the streets as quick as possible. We've got a fleet of vehicles that have provided this city a tremendous amount of service. And Larry, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but we've gotten what I'd call extra magic miles out of these trucks, from what I've been told and heard through the years. I can imagine that our employees here in the city are gonna be very happy to have these new vehicles. It's gonna be safer for them, and we'll be able to continue our quality services, which is one of our strategic goals as a council. And of note, it's almost $100,000 less than what was budgeted, so we're being fiscally responsible, too.
And if I can just add, for the general public that might be listening, these four new vehicles are replacing four aging vehicles that were in pretty poor condition.
Yes. Good comments. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 14.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amended intergovernmental agreement for the establishment of a joint administrative hearing officer system supporting the addition of the Village of Carbon Cliff, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute future amendments for municipal government participants to be added to or deleted from the existing intergovernmental agreement without further city council approval.
Move to adopt the resolution and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the amended intergovernment agreement and future amendments to all agreement as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question, if I might. In the report, in the fourth paragraph, it starts out as best practice, a resolution is attached, et cetera, et cetera. I'm curious, what makes it a best practice to do this in terms of authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to make future adjustments without council approval?
I think that recommendation came from my office, and it was only to, for additions, in other words, if another community wanted to come on, I wasn't certainly trying to usurp the authority of the council, but I thought that when we're talking about bringing on a new community, that it helps share the costs, and it was something I didn't know that if council wanted to vote on, so that was where that recommendation came from.
I was just trying to clear that up in my mind, in terms of, we talk about best practices from time to time in various scenarios, so I was just wanting clarification.
Sure, absolutely.
The only thing I would ask with this is that whether we included it in the motion or not, is that council be given notification if a city's gonna be added or be dropped from the list by their own choosing?
I think if I could just add one...
That's true, we'll do that. It doesn't happen very often. Once people join, they pretty much never leave, and there aren't too many communities left to join, but we'll do that, definitely.
If I could just add to my comments, just very briefly, when I saw, I realize the magnitude of this is fairly small, but when you're talking about intergovernmental agreements, circumventing the elected officials of any of the parties raises questions, but I understand this is just adding or subtracting other municipalities to the agreement.
Right. And just for clarification, that would not allow, for instance, if they're gonna change fee structure, or if they're going to, any substantive change would have to come to council. It would be just for the matter of if there was another outlying community or something that wanted to join, or that wanted to drop out.
It'd actually reduce the cost to the other cities, though.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghettius.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 15.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 6, Division 6 of the Code of Ordinances relating to the Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals and Appeal Procedures and Language in Division 6C.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Is Tom Ayers here?
No.
He's not. Chandler, could you please come up here? And if you can't answer these questions now, that's totally okay. I know we've had study sessions, and this is sort of an amendatory change to what we've already approved in adopting the codes, the 2015 codes. And there's been some talk amongst my colleagues here about where we stand as a city versus our neighboring cities on these codes. So I might be putting you on the spot here, but what I see from my own research is that, and I just had this pulled up, but effective, this is from Bettendorf's website, effective September 1st, 2017, the city council has approved the following national codes, and it goes through and lists them all. This is from their city website as of today. Building, 2015 International Building Code, 2015 International Residential Code, Fire, 2015 International Fire Code, and then so on and so forth. And the website that I was directed to, Bettendorf's website from, I just want to make sure I get this right, the Associated General Contractors of the Quad Cities, has on the Codes tab of their page all the neighboring cities. And what I see is that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we made the change by adopting 2015, we moved from 2009 to 2015.
Believe you're right.
And so, and that's what they have listed here. And I checked a couple of these cities with their various websites to correspond the information, and it seems to be accurate. So I guess what I'm confused about is that across the board, the years for the codes that are adopted are, Bettendorf is the most recent across the board, as I'm seeing it here. Davenport's not far behind. Then the Illinois Quad Cities is hanging out in 2012 and 2009 in varying categories of code. And so I just, I know there were some of us who were talking where our neighboring cities are at, and I can tell you Bettendorf has the most up-to-date codes across the board. And what we've been hearing behind the scenes is that there are some special interest groups out there who've taken offense to us updating our codes to present day. And we look at the housing home starts, they're the highest in Bettendorf and the Quad Cities, and they're, I think, the lowest in Rock Island. And so, if someone's coming to us and saying, well, you can't adopt these recent codes because that's gonna affect your housing starts, my response to them is, well, where the heck have you been the past five years? Where the heck have you been the past 10 years? And then you have the audacity, and I'm specifically referring to the Quad City Home Builders Association, threatening to put up money against this city and people up here to boycott the adoption of these codes. And so I'm putting them on Front Street early, and hopefully this gets covered in the paper. It's to say, how dare you? You know, what we've done to adopt these codes is to try to keep our residents safe. And if someone's gonna buy a brand-new home with materials that, some things have changed, some things haven't, but homes burn hot, and if I'm gonna buy a brand-new home, if there's sprinklers in it, and the additional cost of that spread over a 15, 30-year mortgage is virtually negligible, but the security that gives me, and how that's reflected in my insurance, my homeowner's insurance as well, if there's kids in the home, elderly folks, I mean, across the board, it's a good investment, it's the way of the future. You know, we put sprinklers in this building, we put sprinklers in banks, we put sprinklers in schools, and we have this special interest group saying, we're gonna put money against you and your elected officials in your city's name because through your own sovereign power, you decided I'm gonna update my codes. I think that's absolutely, I'm not gonna say the word. I'm not. And so I welcome their attack on us, so that I can say, you've spent this money on buying billboards or full-page newspaper ads. I'm gonna say, where's the money for an advertising campaign for a residential home start in southwest Rock Island? Or in any part of the city where we've got land for single-family homes? And I would tell this group, you can't buy a brand-new home if there's not one built. So build some brand-new homes in the city, and we'll sell them. We build brand-new apartment units and we fill them. We take old buildings, we renovate them, we fill them. If these groups are just gonna sit here and say, don't do this, don't do this, we haven't heard from you in 10 years. Where have you been? It's the Bettendorf Home Builders Association, it's not the Quad Cities Home Builders Association. They've done nothing for us, and in turn, we expect to do nothing for them. Now, if they want to change the language and come to us and say, let's have a conversation, I'll be like, that's a good start. That's a good start. But I hear of these threats. So, I'm glad we passed these. We got acknowledged today by our chief, the fire chief, IML, Illinois Municipal League. The city's gonna join 104 other cities in Illinois in passing these codes, and I don't really think that we're standing out in the Quad Cities. We were first in adopting body cameras, and we're moving on these codes. we're moving on these codes. The other cities are going to join eventually. The insurance companies are going to say, adopt the codes. It's not 2009 anymore. A lot's changed in a whole lot of ways since 2009. So I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I think it would be reassuring to this council if you and the inspections team could dig into this information that I just discussed, let us know where we're at compared to the other cities. I think that would just be reassuring. So we all have the same facts and we don't have to operate on rumors with this.
Well, Alderman Ship, I have to agree 100%. You said it very well, but it's always the right time to do the right thing. And this is the right thing. It's minimal amount of money when you're looking at the new residential home being built. Simply, five years ago or whenever we did it in '09, I was a part of that and we took out that sprinkler thing. And then since then, I've had grandkids stay all night at my house. I'm thinking, that was, we made the wrong choice to take sprinklers out. And whatever, these people know public safety, they're professionals, and well said.
Thank you.
I just might quickly add, I saw a recent demonstration on, I think it was a video on TV, of two identical fires, one with a sprinkler system, one without a sprinkler system. Believe me, given the choice, anybody would want to have a sprinkler system if that fire was going to be their home or business.
And I asked the chief to ask around local plumbers to get what a local quote would be in a new house that's 100 square feet or 1,000 square feet. So we have some local statistics of how much it would actually cost.
Very good. Good discussion.
Well-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just related to the motion that's before us here, can either Chandler or Randy, I don't really mind who, but just somebody, for the audience at home that doesn't know what we're voting on, simple language, simple English here, what is this amendment doing?
What we did, when this was passed, we actually took out the, oh goodness gracious, here we go. I just had everything in front of me and I'm lost at all. We took out the Housing Appeals Board, basically. And we wrote it out with the ordinance. So now we're putting it back in, where it should be, which is in Chapter Two, I believe. And it puts everybody and all the other boards and commissions right there and appeals boards. So we're putting it back in.
So we're just reinstating an appeal board that a homeowner or a builder, whomever, could appeal some decision made by the inspections Department?
Yep.
Yeah, the appeal board portion for this particular code actually was in the body of the code. All the others were in the separate section for the city. So there was an addendum A prepared, and then Tom said, hey, wait a minute, addendum A, got rid of that portion of the international code, let's put it back in. And that was, he and Bruce did that. So it's just putting that procedure in place where it is for all the other, for the plumbing and the other appeal boards.
Yeah. And I see no reason why we should not have a way for people to appeal decisions. Doesn't mean that you're going to have your decision appealed or not, right? It just means that the system is there.
Good. Can I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Seven ice, no nace. Motion carried.
Item sixteen.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a new maximum amount award of $7,500 for the facade improvement program.
Move to approve the new maximum amount awarded to facade applicants as recommended.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on this?
I have a question for Chandler, a couple. Come on back!
Stay up here.
Your memo states that for over 15 years, the city has offered this assistance to businesses. Correct?
Yes.
So then last year, what was the total amount that we funded? What did we spend in 2017 with this project program?
Deck number four, we ran out of money.
Do you know, so it was $150,000 budget?
I know, gaming grant won, which can use throughout the entire city, was $50,000, gone in a heartbeat. The downtown TIF, we may not have used all of that one, we might have applied some of that towards others, and the North 11th Street TIF, I think we kept that for some other projects as well. But we could really, by reducing the amount, we could start spreading it out to even more with the gaming grant.
Do you know the total number of projects that went out last year?
I can get that for you. I just don't have it off the top of my head.
Yes, I'm just looking for you to build the case of saying, we have a need for 20 projects. We had 30 apply last year and we only could fund, you know, with the $15,000. You're making the case that with $15,000, you only can fund 10 projects with 20-
Absolutely. But when you look at how many projects we have with the gaming grant, when the new number is approved, I'll have almost all of that gone tomorrow morning with the applications. We had so many people with the, in 2017, out of the gaming grant that couldn't get funded because we didn't have enough money. And so the $50,000 in the gaming grant goes away really quick because I can use it anywhere in the city. And that's why it's a very powerful program for those who are not in a TIF area.
7,500 times 20 is 150,000, though.
Well, that's the 10 projects at 15,000.
Right. But you're saying you're only counting for 50,000. A simple spreadsheet of this went through 2017-
I've got all that in the office.
Okay, I appreciate to see that.
Not a problem.
I can attest, I don't remember what month it was last year, but it was very early in my existence as city council member that somebody asked me for, you know, to apply to the facade program and I looked into it and it was like, ah, money's all gone already. It just seems fair that if, that more people, if more people want to utilize this money, then we shouldn't just give a bunch of money to a very few amount of people, but give a little bit less money to more people.
I'm just asking.
Yes, Chandler. Can a company that got money last year, can they come back and get it again this year? Or is it limited, you can only apply and get it every so many years?
Okay, this is where we kind of get into the little subcategories. If you are a standalone business with only one tenant in your facility, no, you have to wait three years. However, if you had three storefronts within your building and you had a tenant in one and you received a facade grant for that one tenant, okay, then the next year you lease out a second one, you can apply again for that second tenant. You have to have an occupied unit in order to receive the funds. So someone could receive multiples, but they have to have a tenant within. Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Can we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Seven ice, no nace. Motion carried.
Item seventeen.
Report from the mayor regarding reappointments to the Labor Day Parade Advisory Board.
Move to approve the reappointments as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
You know, I'm looking at these names here, Mr. Mayor, and just a real unqualified bunch of people. I'm kidding. These are-
We know. It was a joke.
Holy smoke.
No, I'm glad that they're willing to do this again. These are three-year terms. And Mary, Art, Grace, and Kay, I mean, this is, thank you. It's a lot of work.
Could we have those names read off for the public?
Yes. It's Mary Chapel, Art Milton, Grace Shirk, and Kay Whitley.
Whitley?
And, yes, the number of them have been on for quite a while and that sort of thing, but there is a learning curve on this project and it takes a lot of work. Doesn't happen all year long, but it does happen very heavily lifting at a certain time of year. So they've done a great job and-
We are wonderful to have them.
Yes, very wonderful.
They do an excellent job.
Yes. They really do. All right. Is, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item eighteen.
Report from the mayor regarding appointments to the reconvene Advanced Technology and Sustainability Task Force.
Move to approve the appointments as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second. And I guess I can read the names also for this, because this is a new, it's a task force. It's kind of a resurrection of an old group, but in a different task associated with it. But, so we have, and I, boy, I'll tell you, I get the first name mangled up here, but Hano Samar with Mid-America Energy, Shirley Johnson with the Corps of Engineers, Jeff Nelson with Metro Link, Matt Coller with IMEG Engineering, Chris Strunk with Augustana College, Olivia Dorothy with American Rivers, Larry Cook with City Rock Island, and Tom Ayers with the City Rock Island. All are quite qualified for this and we can expand the group as we go, but this is a good starting point and we have some, a couple tasks that we have set forth for this group to work on, to start it off. And they'll start meeting, I think we got the first meeting February first or something of that sort, for this group to start working. So.
I'm very excited about this. Thankful to the mayor and staff for, you know, receiving applicants from us. I know I suggested a few names. And I'm very excited to have these residents participate in helping the city with different tasks related to sustainability. I don't know, Randy or the mayor, if you're able to say what tasks, you know, what's a primary goal that we hope to accomplish with this group starting out? What are we rechartering this group for?
They have two tasks initially. One is looking at solar energy. That's a task identified by the city council at goal-setting last year, so they'll be assisting in that endeavor. And then we have a group that's going to come in and look at sustainability and technology for the city. It's a private group and then they come in for free and they take a look at, you know, our infrastructure in our buildings and our lighting on the street and in buildings, and just any energy efficiencies we might be able to garner from making improvements there. Then they make some recommendations and if it looks like there's something viable there, then it would come to you to decide if we want to proceed with an RFP to go forward. But this group will look at that also to help assist us in that technology endeavor with some of their expertise, to see if it's actually feasible. You know, a consultant might make a recommendation. Again, this is a no-cost consultant. They're not paying for anything. But sometimes staff doesn't have the technical knowledge necessarily to understand and a group like this offers that technical knowledge for us.
Well, in the program we just approved, the FACAD, you know, we have that 75% of costs for Energy Star-related green roofs and energy-efficient upgrades to FACADs of commercial buildings.
Once again, we take a look at this as being a task force more than a commission or a committee. At this point, we've got a couple tasks that we would like them work on. It may be an issue that they meet once a month or more often or less often, and once that task is complete, then it's once again their choice. If they want to continue meeting or come up with new tasks or if we have new ones, that's fine. If not, then they would not meet. We would wait for a task. Versus some commissions and boards meet every month, no matter what is happening. We don't want to waste anybody's time for that. And so this is more task-oriented than in the past committee.
Do we have a assigned schedule for the commission to meet?
We don't, so they're going to have to meet and kind of organize and then they'll come up with their own schedule. I don't know what their, some of these people still work and so I don't know what their work schedule is, like how flexible, but it would be up to them to really set that time and then we'll publish that once. And initially, it's probably be once a month.
Yeah. Yeah, because the task force will still be, you know, still required to follow Open Meetings Act, correct?
So this task force would not-
No.
Because they're making a recommendation to staff, so it's a working group and it's not covered by ordinance. And I think Dave can expand on that. I think that's where we are with that. They're just a working group again.
I'd be happy to send out the, we did a short memo and just a short note on it. I'd be happy to send that out.
Okay.
Kind of like the Streetscape Task Committee and that sort of thing.
Sure. All right.
And I, for, I'll just speak for myself, but for me, this is a very, very happy moment for me on this council, because I know the previous iteration of this was the consortium that was started by our former mayor, Mark Schubert. And that was my first time coming to City Hall. I was invited by Dr. Norm Moline. I was a student at Augustan at the time and I came in downstairs, City Hall, in the HR conference room there. And that's where the sort of the Rock Island bug got me at that point. I thought, wow, this city cares. And science matters. It matters a lot to me. Scientific thinking is needed more than ever. And we've got some really talented people with big minds that have put thousands of dollars of education into their brains. And I think they can contribute a lot to the city if we ask and if we organize. And I think this is a great first step to get those minds together and watch what they can do and see who else they can pull in, because we need them. We need them more than ever. And energy is a big question mark for the future. It affects our lives every single moment. And this is, this is a very proud moment for me on this council to resurrect this old but new idea. So thank you for getting this done. I know this was a priority in our goal-setting session and it's really reassuring to see those goals that we set come to fruition in our body here. So thank you.
Okay. So with that, we do, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes. We have item nineteen. Other business, anybody got anything for, yes?
Yes, sir. Just to kind of build off of what Alderman Ship was saying about Rock Island being a city that cares, I want to give some accolades to two events that took place this last week in Rock Island. Last Monday was the Martin Luther King Memorial Service at the King Center. There were several aldermen there. They had a nice crowd there. They had some excellent speakers. And I wanted to congratulate anybody at the King Center or otherwise who had anything to do with organizing and pulling that off. The second event was Saturday, there was a women's rally, women's rights rally in Schubert Park and a march following the rally to the Rock Island County Clerk's Office to turn in some registered voter registrations. There were also city council members at that event and there was a lot of people there. It was publicized on TV afterwards, on the TV stations and in the newspaper. And that also speaks well for the city of Rock Island as far as caring about individuals, men and women both. So I just wanted to mention those things.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Also, I'm the representative on the library board. Today, we started selling bags of books at the Southwest Library, and I think it goes January the 30th. You can get a bag of books and they give you the book bag from the library for $10. So I would ask people to go out there. And there were quite a few people that started at noon today and participate. Where can you get, some of those books that they have out there, because they've been discarded, are like $40, $50 books. Okay, the other thing, I've been told about our population signs, and Randy, you might be able to answer this. Who puts up those signs? And the reason I ask, almost anywhere you come into a main artery in the city, the signs are different, the amount of population in the city. And I looked myself in my ward, there's two, and I think one's 40,000, 300, the other one's 39,000.
You know, I'll find out for you and let you know.
Okay.
So I don't know who puts those up.
No one really knows. They just kind of appear.
I'm assuming it's the-
That was Wally World, okay?
When it was installed, that was the date.
Okay, Wednesday, there's a first warp meeting held at the King Center. And I believe the mayor will be there. I think the city manager will be there and a few more city staff. Everyone is welcome to come out and it'll be from six to whenever we get done. We should be done by eight.
That's great. No, look forward to it. The ones we've had so far have been very informative and enjoyed being there. And I think most of the staff has enjoyed it also and learned something. So transparency, work with them.
When will the next downtown meeting be for the public to come out? We had the one at Theo's.
The Streetscape?
Yes.
I don't know. Is there another public one or the? I don't think it's-
Haven's scheduled.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item number 20.
Executive Session, 5 IL CS 120, Section Two, C1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body. And 5 IL CS 120, Section Two, C12, the establishment of reserves or settlement of claims as provided in the Local Governmental and Governmental Employees Tort Immunity Act.
Motion to go into executive session for the exceptions cited.
Second.
Question on that? Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry. Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item?